The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting is now in session. Today is Tuesday, March 8th, 2016 at 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful day you have provided. Let us thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, for the rain that you have provided for us, the much-needed area that we need to get rid of this drought that we have. We thank you for that, Heavenly Father. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for the many provisions that you provide for us. We thank you for our community, Heavenly Father. We thank you for the staff that works for this city. We thank you for each employee that works here. We thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, for this council. And we just ask tonight, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you give them wisdom, courage, and understanding. We know, Heavenly Father Jesus, there's so many decisions that have to be made. But we know, Heavenly Father, when we call upon you, that you help us with each of those decisions. We leave it all in your hands, Heavenly Father, because we know that you said you'd never leave us or never forsake us, that you'd always be with us. You'd stick closer than any brother. We know tonight, Heavenly Father, as decisions have to be made, that you'll give them wisdom, that you'll give them strength. And Heavenly Father Jesus, we'll be pleased because we know that you're guiding them. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council authority member Leanne Jones-Cruz.
Here.
Council authority member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council authority member Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Janine Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. It has agenda changes, and there are no changes to the agenda tonight. Conflicts of interest, any council or authority member or staff who has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time.
I need to ask you something. Are we okay? Okay, thank you.
See and none. We'll go directly to public comments. And this is going to be awkward. I do not have glasses today. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For the record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have any public comments tonight?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Rich Homer, 2116 Park Ridge Drive, Riverbank, California. Good evening. You know, I'm really excited tonight. This is an exciting time. We have an IMAX opening March 25th. But prior to that, the Riverbank Historical Society is going to hold, to me, one of the probably epitome of a grand fundraiser. And I'm hoping you'll all attend. I know the mayor's bought tickets. I know Mr. Campbell's bought tickets. I know Jill's bought tickets. I hope every one of you buys tickets and brings your friends. Just a little bit about this. We are going to host on Wednesday, March 23rd, the movie Jurassic World. We tried to get Star Wars. Unfortunately, George Lucas and Disney do not do much on donations in that world. But this will be a great movie to see on the IMAX screen. Tickets went on sale March 4th. They're going quite well right now. We have two types of seating. We have VIP seating, red carpet entrance, champagne reception, special tour of the IMAX Theater, commemorative gift, other things of that nature. Also, there's the general admission tickets, and they'll be $30. What I call the fundraising team, and I'm going to introduce them in a minute, because these folks are so talented. I mean, everything from press releases to coming up with just incredibly creative ideas to, if you go to riverbankhistoricmuseum.com, you will see our brand-new website, and you can now buy a ticket online. In fact, Cal was so excited about it, he bought 200 tickets online. Council member, I'm sorry. Anyway, I would like to introduce, and if they would stand up, these are the folks who are making this thing happen, and I am so proud. We had a chance to tour today, to sort of get our logistics down, and each day, it's exciting. People can buy tickets at the email address or the website address I gave you. That's riverbankhistoricmuseum.com. They can buy those online. They can buy them at O'Brien Supermarket, and they can buy them at Farmers Insurance, the one right here at the corner of Patterson, Third Street in Santa Fe. And Lana Clayton, who I'm going to introduce first, is the one who was it? Lana. And we have Kristin Plantis. Kristin here? She is here. And Barbara England. Barbara's not here today. She's done fundraising. She was head of fundraising for Girl Scouts for many years, neat lady. Mary Bant is Mary here? Mary is right there. Hi, Mary. Good to see you. Diana Hansen. Diana, is Diana here? No. Diana's going to be our photographer. We're going to have one of those backdrops where people who are the VIP will get a picture taken as a part of the souvenir package. And we've got this really neat backdrop. You're all going to love that. Paulette Roberson is not here tonight. Kristen Whitley. Is Kristen here? She's the, we have Kristen, T-I-N, and we have Kristen, T-E-N. So sometimes it gets a little confusing. Council member Cal Campbell is part of this committee. We appreciate Cal's input. He's been great. Let me introduce Craig Ethea. Craig is our new president of the Historical Society Board this year, and we're happy to have him. Rick McGinnis has been helping us out. I don't know if Rick's here tonight. Let's see, who else? Diana Talbot and Dan Talbot have been doing some things. And last but not least, Vina Hudgens right there. Vina has so many contacts, it just blows my mind. And so, a fabulous committee doing a fabulous fundraiser to build this cultural and museum expansion that we so desperately need here in Riverbank. So I hope to see you there. I hope to see Tom's firm buy about 10 VIP tickets.[553.16][553.16](Laughter). They can easily afford it. And with that said, just wanted to invite the council. This will be the last time before this event, and thank you so much for the time this evening.
Any further public comment? Thank you. Moving to the consent calendars, consistent with Item 3A, wave readings. Item 3B, approval of February 23rd, 2016, City Council and the Local Redevelopment Authority minutes. Item 3C, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, to approve the reappointment of Michelle Guzman to Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District Board of Directors as Riverbank representatives. Do I have any comments or anyone wishing to pull any consent item? Seeing none, do I have any from the public wishing to discuss any of the items? Seeing none, bring it back to the council for a recommendation and/or action.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion to approve in a second.
Council authority member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones-Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 4-1, second reading by title only, and adoption of proposed ordinance number 2016-004 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending sections 52.01, 52.32, 52.34, and 52.61 of Chapter 52, Water of Title V, Public Works of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
Mayor members of the City Council, as you may recall, at the last meeting, this ordinance was reviewed thoroughly with the staff report. This evening, we are presenting it to you for second reading and recommending adoption. If you have additional questions or if the public has additional questions, Michael Riddell will be happy to address them, along with Annabelle Aguilar, who were involved in preparing the actual ordinance for your consideration.
From the public, do we have any questions or comments on item 4.1?
Oh, Rich was. Good evening, members of City Council. Scott McRitchie, Riverbank. I'm not sure if this is the one, but I was reading on the computer, your agenda, that it talked about, one thing was the time of watering, and it was going from nine to nine. And I don't think that's appropriate. The reason being is that the evaporate transpiration rate is nothing after about four o'clock in the wintertime. There's no evaporation, there's no nothing. But going out at night after nine o'clock, when you can't see what you're watering, it doesn't make any sense. So I can see it in the summer, nine to nine, because it's hot. It's still hot in the evening, but, and there's still some sunlight at eight o'clock or nine o'clock. But to have that in here now, to me, doesn't make sense, and it's a burden, and I think that that should be addressed. Looking through the computer, I give you a lot of credit for designing the new site. It took me only one punch to get the City Council agenda. That's a great thing. So that was one thing I brought up. The other thing is, I'm really distressed, and I'm not sure if this is a proper time or whatever, but to read in the paper that we are fifty-some-odd percent over, not under, but over, on our water use in, I believe it was December. And I just don't understand that. Our neighborhood, everybody has their water turned off. I'm not sure what the standard is. I'm not sure if they're measuring the water use from the 12 wells we have, and if there's any escape there, that's counted, whereas if you have smart meters, you're just reading at the meter. But something doesn't ring right where everybody else is 20% under, 50% under, we're fifty-some-odd percent over. So I really think that there needs to be some discussion somewhere as to what's going on here. Because, like I say, everybody in our neighborhood, the widow ladies, I've changed them all to nothing. They have no water whatsoever coming off. I used to have a little pond in front of my house, because it's a low spot, and the birds would come, and the squirrels would come, and the dogs would come and drink there. There's nothing there, even in the wintertime. There's no water there. So all of us talk to my neighbors. They're all doing their little things. They have buckets, or they have this, or that, or the other thing, trying to save water, and yet we're fifty-some-odd percent over. And here, we're burdened with all these things that we're trying to do, and yet we're doing them, and the water use is up. So I'd like some explanation of that sometime, somewhere, in the newspaper, or some retort somewhere, to tell us why we're 50% over when it's the middle of winter and nobody's using their sprinklers. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Bring it back to the City Council. So I'll address your two issues. First off, we held a public hearing on the timing, and although it seems right now outrageous because of February's time of being dry, we're back into a wet time. We saw very little reason to water at all during the winter. But we gave you some timing to do it. And if you have a drip system, you can turn the drip system on, and you can turn it off. You can be for whatever time that you want, as long as someone's present. Doesn't have to be strictly, you know, watching each of the drips going out, but it does have to be available to be turned off if you have a rupture. For our water usage, it is disconcerting that we are at higher, it's 40%, not 50. The B was wrong. We are in close consultation with the State Water Board. We have together come up with a plan, and the plan is to be very restrictive, the most restrictive in the state, on water usage for outside landscape watering. We also came up with our institution of the smart meters, which started this week for the major ones, and next week it'll start in the residential. We're hoping to have most of it completed by the summer months. In March of this year, we are going to discuss a comprehensive watering plan that'll focus on both the summer and the winter months, the hours of operation, whether we're in a drought or we're not in a drought. So we'll be looking closely at our water, watering times and our water restrictions, and it'll be open for the public comments at the time. And I encourage all to come on in and to help us come up with an ideal plan. This plan was only meant to be during the winter months until we could come up with a solid plan in total. It's like I rehearsed this. So next, I don't know what, the 22nd of March, we'll be discussing the water for, the water plan for summer and winter months, hours of operation, and hopefully we'll be back to two watering days a week. Now, addressing the loss, while we are putting in the new meters, we'll have more capability of understanding actual usage versus what we have pumped. I believe, although it's not proven, that we have major leaks in our system. The parts of our system are very old. And while we're doing these upgrades, we should find more and more of the leaks, where we have to concentrate our efforts. I've asked the Public Works Department to come up with a plan to divide the city into different quadrants and see if they have a head loss at non-using times, such as midnight to two. If you do have a head loss, you probably have a leak in that quadrant, and to start looking for those leaks. So we are taking the steps. Okay? We are working closely with the state. They are very supportive of our efforts, and they understand that some of our systems are old, and that some of our systems, as we upgrade them, we will find areas of waste. Now, we started saving as a city in 2011, the first year of the drought. So when we got to 2013, we were already at a great restriction. A lot of people reduced their watering rates severely in 2013, and the state knew that when they picked 2013 as the baseline. Okay? Now, the anomalies that we're increasing is coincidental, that it's when they bill you, for some reason. Every time we bill everyone, we say we have a spike in our water use. So with the new software system, the new meter system, and with the Public Works trying to isolate problem areas, we should be on track before the end of the summer months. Yeah, I hope that addressed your concerns. Okay? Do we have any further comments or recommendations from the City Council on item 4.1?
Yeah, I have a quick, I have a quick comment. When we do focus on March 22nd with the water plan that we're doing, I'd like to kind of throw something out there that came to mind when I was reading this agenda item, is that, and we had an email come by to us about some water needing to be done with the planning for a special occasion or an emergency or exemption. And I was wondering if we, anybody had thought about putting in our water plan some sort of way to do an emergency watering or an exemption for a temporary exemption kind of thing? My example would be, I know we have in place that the schools can water their sports fields for safety reasons, but if we have someone that comes in and something happens, and they need to get seed growing or whatever, and they need to do some water on it, they can file for some sort of a temporary, they need water for, you know, 24 hours on this. I just think we may need to put something in place for that, and I'd like to maybe see that out there. I just kind of wanted to throw it out there. I think we need to have something in line for some temporary and emergency. We need to do something about watering, so.
I would recommend that when we get the first reading or we get the staff report, that we mark it up, and then bring those recommendations to the staff, and the staff can then bring it forward, and we can discuss it as a whole.
Perfect.
Still have a motion or anything on 4-1?
I'll make a motion if we accept item 4.1.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item 4.1.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones-Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.1, this is a public hearing. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, approving variance number 01-2016 for Galaxy Cinemas, Riverbank 2525 Patterson Road, Riverbank APN 075-008-029.
Mayor members of the City Council, Donna Kinney, our planning and building manager, will be presenting this item for your consideration tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So Galaxy is seeking a variance for an increase in square footage and in height for the IMAX sign. As you can see, it's a series of cut-out letters that are, that will be attached directly to the building. This project location, that's the new IMAX building, or a portion of the building, and the IMAX sign would be installed at the 47-foot height. The building is 48 feet. The variance request is for a 530-square-foot IMAX sign versus 260 square feet, which is allowed, and at a 47-foot height, as I previously mentioned, where a 40-foot maximum height is allowed. The reason this came about is, as a building is constructed, signage is usually obtained under a separate permit. And in this case, there needed to be a little bit more coordination between the contractor and the sign company and the city as to when the actual connectors of the sign to the building were installed. They were installed before the signage was actually submitted or approved, and it would be a substantial cost to remove those connectors now and replace them in a separate area for a smaller sign. Under the general plan policy, land use 4.2, the city will encourage the revitalization of existing commercial areas through flexible design standards and other means. This project is categorically exempt under Section 15311 of the SEQA guidelines. It's considered an accessory structure, and so the construction of minor structures that are accessory to existing commercial facilities or on-premises signs are considered an accessory structure. The signage will be lighted, and the colors behind the IMAX sign are the corporate colors of the IMAX company. The Planning Commission did hear this at their special meeting on February 29th, and they did recommend that the council find that the project is categorically exempt, and that they do recommend approving the variance based on the findings. Now, there are three findings. They were in the staff report. The first is because of special circumstances applicable to the property. The building may not enjoy privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity. In the C2 zoning district, we do allow chimneys and towers and other facilities that are taller than the 40 feet to be constructed. And so, this sign would be no higher than what we do allow in the C2 as far as these other accessory structures. In addition, the nearest IMAX is about 55 miles away, and this sign is exactly the same size as the other IMAXs use. The applicant is here as well, if you have additional questions, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
I have a question.
Yes.
Of 200% change, over 200% change.
Is that a question or are you just a statement?
Is that correct?
Yes, that sounds correct.
Okay, it's 200-plus percent. It appears like they knew it before, and they're bringing it up right at the very ending. My, that, to me, that, after, after the concessions given, we should have had a little bit more of the courtesy. Did they provide any of that to you?
No. My understanding, when I spoke to the sign company, that they were awaiting direction from Galaxy, and at that time, they didn't, the sign company did not know what our regulations were because they hadn't approached us yet. They didn't know it was time to do the signage. So when they contacted me, it was, what are our regulations? And I provided those, and then within just a couple of days, the application was submitted, and I realized it was over, and then we started this process.
So was the sign company that could be held liable, not the Galaxy Theater?
Well, I'm not an attorney as far as liability goes, but I believe they're, you know, a part of the problem. If it would have only been 10% over, my understanding, because it's a PD, I could have signed off on 10% over, but you are correct. It is substantially over, which is why we're asking for this variance. And if you do look at, oops, did we lose it already?
Did you break it?
I think I did. It doesn't want to go back.
Well, you know, they've already had the, they've had the signed brackets installed a while ago.
Correct, about two or so weeks ago. Well, right before.
Before that. The only, only issue I'm really concerned is that across the way with the IMAX, how is it going to affect the residents up on that small hill? Are they going to be able to see it? I know that they meant, they wanted the sign that big so people walking by could see it, as if they couldn't, but it's, I believe the staff report quoted pedestrian traffic.
Yes. I just said, you know, one more comment, that the IMAX sign is appropriate visually wise for the size of the building that is being constructed, and that nowadays with LED lighting, we do get a little bit more directed and less of a glare of lighting. And so that should aid in, you know, keeping the lighting contained on site.
This is a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Rich Homer, 2116 Park Ridge Drive, haven't moved yet, representing Galaxy Theaters. You know, Mayor, that was the same question I asked when I heard about this. I said, what happened there? And there seemed to have been some confusion about size of signs between the general contractor and the sign contractor. And I think that's where that occurred, in their communication there, and somehow something went amiss. However, I think what Donna said really is realistic. First of all, let's talk about the illumination of the IMAX sign. With the new lighting, it's not going to glare out into the street. What it will do, though, for those patrons that are leaving or coming into the theater, it will give added light and added safety features for those folks. This probably will be the last variance you folks ever hear, if I'm not mistaken. Jill, variances now are just heard by the Planning Commission.
We're proceeding with that, that change in the ordinance so that ordinances could be heard by Planning Commission. And I apologize, Mayor, we don't tend to talk during public comment. I apologize.
Also, too, since this was a planned development, honestly, this could have been handled under a conditional use permit and approved at the Planning Commission level. The problem with that is there's a short timeframe now, and Galaxy Theaters wanted to see the IMAX sign up before the doors were opened to the general public. If you go down to the crossroads, a real good example is the size of the signs down there are, I don't know how many feet, and I think that's the correlation that your planning director was, was trying to make, that there are other signs that are large and big such Couple other things. This is the same size as all other Galaxy Theater IMAX signs. It doesn't differ from those. So it's sort of a standard-size IMAX sign. It's not differing from other ones that we currently have. And we do believe the visual symbol will attract additional patronage. Patronage serves as a beacon for the economic success of present and future business throughout the city, particularly in that area. And one particular goal I did want to bring up that's in the land policy is the city will encourage the revitalization of existing commercial areas through flexible development standards, public investment, property assemblage, incentives, streamlined entitlement process, catalyst projects, public-private partnerships, and other means. In addition, speaking specifically to the Highway 108 or Patterson Corridor, goal design 12 was the Patterson Road corridor and existing commercial areas are vital and attractive focal points of community activity. And right at this juncture, we have two vacant large parcels, and I think with your IMAX coming there, this is going to lead to many more businesses coming to that area. This auditorium will serve as a destination, thus benefiting all commercial establishments on Patterson Road and throughout the city. Also, the grant of the variance will direct and implement the aforementioned goals and policies of the general plan and will not constitute a special privilege to Galaxy Theater. And also, and this is the main one, because if we were just looking at a conditional use permit, this is all we'd have to do, is the granting of such application will not, under the circumstances of this particular case, materially affect adversely the health or safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the property of the applicant will, and will not materially be detrimental to the public welfare or interest to property or improvements in the neighborhood. The sign will face Patterson Road, away from adjoining neighborhoods. The illumination sign will be directed toward Patterson Road, making minimal or actually beneficial impacts such as patron safety created by the sign. The sign will be constructed according to the California Building Code standards, therefore not interest to property or other neighborhood improvements. Can I answer any other questions? Thank you.
Good evening again, and I'm still in Riverbank, too, just like Rich. First of all, as far as the Galaxy Theaters go, they're nothing but a plus in the community. I like the management. They've always been very supportive of the community. The place is clean, they're friendly, and I had one favorite that they eliminated, and that was Monday Night Football. My TV is about this big, and the screen was huge, and you could duck when these guys started coming in at you. I also have my Galaxy Rewards card. They've done a good job for me because it's in black and white, being colorblind, everybody has the same thing, so I don't feel like I'm discriminated against. Having said that, I've heard nothing but so far baloney. Let's take the screens and let's take some of these other screens that are around. I live in Dublin. My son lives in Dublin. We go to IMAX over there. It's neat. I also occasionally have four or five days of vacation, or annual vacation, in Palm Springs. It's actually Cathedral City where the IMAX is down there. And both of these are on highways, 580 in the case of Dublin, 111 in the case of Cathedral City. Now, there's all kind of junk down there, so you have to, if you're going to get your percentage of the business, have to have a sign that's a big jumbo boy like that thing. Okay, now here, are we competing with the rear-end shop? Are we competing with the washing machine, car washing machine? I mean, you can see this right now, if you ask somebody, or somebody asks you if your direction is something, yeah, it's right across from the Galaxy. It's just down from the Galaxy. Everybody knows where the thing is. It's huge. So you have a big sign. Are they going to see it in Escalon, in Oakdale? Are they going to see it in Modesto? No, you're going to see the building as you drive down the street. It's not like these other places where there's, in a big mall or something like that, where there's a lot of competing businesses, a lot of signs. So the other thing is, I'm not sure, but I think they probably have some pretty smart legal people there, some pretty smart people, architects. This is a multimillion-dollar facility that goes in, and you tell me that those guys don't read to know what the sign ordinance is? Come on, that's baloney. This thing that Rich was talking about, that you have to have the big sign to develop this thing, if you want it to look like Las Vegas, do the IMAX with a 500-foot sucker out there, okay? If you want to have a nice community, like some in the Bay Area, like the Walnut Creek and Danville and some of these places, they don't have sign squat one, okay? You just go in there and it's nice, but you don't have all this glare and everything. As far as this thing adding to the safety, if you had a couple of good spotlights that are down without all this IMAX, it'd be as safe or safer because you'd actually see in front of you. That's baloney. Okay, I was on the Planning Commission a few years ago. We had a company called McDonald's. They came in. They wanted a big sign. They wanted certain colors. We told them, no. They said, well, we're moving out. We're not coming back here. We stuck to our guns. We got normal signage within our codes. And what happened? They've expanded it twice. The other day, you couldn't even get around the corner because the cars were all backed up into the street at the drive-and-talk machine, and the parking lot was full of walk-in customers. So this isn't going to deter people. Shoot, the building itself is big enough, you can see it for miles around, so that's not a deal. As far as giving them a variance, one thing I have with a fault is we tend to do too many variances. This thing with 190 houses out here, a variance is ground there for a PD. PD means you can do anything you want to do, baby. Okay, same thing here. You can't do anything you want to do. There's rules, there's regulations. Let's stick to them, because if you don't, as soon as the guy builds in those two lots that Mr. Homer was talking about, they're going to want an IMAX sign in front of their place. And it's going to look, like I say, it's going to look like Las Vegas or some glary thing, whereas once you, you want buildings and everything, and they'll come because the IMAX is a draw, Galaxy Theaters is a draw. So it'll be a nice place for people to put in businesses. But if you want them glary and cruddy-looking, that's the way to do it. They spent a lot of dough to make their place look real nice. That's fine, but I don't want all the searchlights downtown like that. I don't think it's necessary. See what other complaints and crabbing I can do here. I do think you have to look at your PDs before they're just dispersed. Oh, the other thing, I think when you have variances only at the, at the Planning Commission, that's not right either. If there, maybe you put in that a variance affecting so many dollars or so many this or that, because this is where people come. Most of us occasionally will go to a Planning Commission if we hear something that's really specific to our needs, but a lot of times, we can't go to all these meetings, but we do come here, and I would expect it to be done here. If this thing was done strictly over there, I'd have never heard about it. That's enough of my rant, but I definitely think you need to look at it, and I'm really disappointed in some ways that the horsepower they have at IMAX wasn't able to come in earlier and talk to you and bring it before the council, before it was done. I think that that was a mistake, and they should fire whoever they had because it's just not right. And if there's some involvement with our city people, then they should be reprimanded also. Thank you.
So no further comments? I close the public hearing. Bring it back to the council. Any comments, questions before we?
I just think it's unfortunate that the approval process didn't happen, didn't occur before, you know, at the appropriate time. I think that it, it could have been, should, probably should have been, but, and maybe on the city's part, too, that we didn't, I don't know. I don't know if it was on our part to step forward and say, hey, what about your signage? I don't know if that's the correct protocol for us, but it just seems like things didn't happen, you know, the way they should have. And maybe we need to be, as a city, more proactive in planning with the project manager from the beginning to the end, and so we don't have to go through this again, perhaps.
I agree with Councilmember Martinez that it was unfortunate it happened, but as I look at the drawing, I keep picturing the sign half the size, and aesthetically, if it were half the size, I don't think it would blend in as well with the building, you know, and the other IMAXs have a sign that's similar to it in size. So to me, aesthetically, I think the size, even though it breaks our variance, is, I think it's better the way it is that way rather than half the size.
We know that the Galaxy is putting in a concession stand in the IMAX even though they are not, are not approved for that, and they went through the health and safety, it's not completed yet, they haven't asked for it, but it certainly seems like they will come in, and it's like, it's in our face. No, sir. So do you know about that? No, no. We're done with public comment.
I did find out about that. In fact, there were probably six or seven items that they had deferred submittals on. So while we reviewed the bulk of the building, these other submittals kind of hung out there for a while until they came in, like the elevators and the screen brackets and things like that. So there was a lot of, you know, coming, going, and giving and taking on those. I did hear about the, as soon as we heard that the county health was out there about the grease traps, I did know about it, and we told them that if they had plans to go ahead and install the sausage bar or whatever was over there, that we needed plans and we needed them right away. We tried to stay on top of it.
Your recommendation on the sign?
Mayor, members of the City Council, I would say that the Planning Commission recommended approval of the sign, and it was heard at that level. And that certainly the process, it was unfortunate, for whatever reason, the staff's information and what was provided by the staff gave them plenty of information on which to make their decisions and to plan their construction. For whatever reason, that did not go through at the construction level. I can certainly appreciate your frustration, and that there is a sense that maybe they took the approach of asking for forgiveness rather than permission. And maybe that's the case, I don't know. What I can tell you, though, from a city manager perspective, is, is that it did go through the process, it was reviewed by the Planning Commission, and this is a company that has invested significantly in our community. I think that it is a unique building and a unique, a unique building for our city, and that as going through the process and looking at the, looking at the process that it did go through, once the mistake was recognized, it did go through the public process for consideration. And so that is why it's before you tonight, and the recommendation from the Planning Commission is, is to support the sign.
Thank you, Donna.
Jill? I just wanted to throw my two cents in there, and I appreciate hearing, again, the quote from the land use policy. Thank you for sharing that with us tonight, and I think it brought up a good point about being lenient and flexible. I think you heard all the words that he said. Again, after reading all this stuff, I think what resonated and what I have circled and starred here is that the Planning Commission was making that recommendation. And my third thing that kind of stands out here is that we need to promote business in our community, and they have been a substantial and upstanding business with us, and I hope they're hearing everything that we're saying up here and continue to have an incredible relationship with them. We have some expectations from them, and I hope they stand up to that.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and accept the variance.
You have a motion to approve. Any further comments, discussion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve item 5.1 and a second.
Council members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
5. Museum Annex Concept Plans.
Mayor, members of the City Council, the Historical Society, as was discussed earlier this evening, is in the midst of planning to build a building next to the current historical museum for housing of displays, including an antique fire engine, and they are proceeding to raise funds to make that building. And tonight, they did ask for an opportunity to present that concept plan to the City Council that they could then go and use as a promotional piece when they are asking for grants, fundraisers, et cetera. And so this evening, we have Donna Kinney, as well as Mr. Rich Homer, who's representing the Historical Society tonight, to provide an overview of the concept plan for your consideration.
Good evening again. Staff has been meeting with members of the Historical Society. As Joe mentioned, this is just a concept plan that will be used for fundraising events and grant opportunities. The location is this property right here. This is City Hall North, and this is the current museum. This is a site plan of the area. This is the existing museum, and this would be the annex next to it. They're looking at the floor plans now as far as how to, oops, sorry, how to perhaps leave the museum area open while possibly closing this off for meetings, have restroom accessible to both. Some of the ideas they're thinking of. Some of the ideas they're thinking of. Have some elevations. The front elevation would be where the fire truck could enter and leave. This is just the rear of the building here that would face the police station and alley. This side would face the current museum. As you can see, they're not very well-developed plans yet because they're just a concept. There is a proposal to put together a working group of both the city and the Historical Society. As they do their fundraising and move forward to look at developing better plans, more like construction plans, we would do an architectural review so that we can determine that the plans will meet the downtown-specific plan. And then Mr. Holmer is here, and he has asked to, to come up and help with the presentation as well.
Before he comes up, ADA parking and also the parking that is going to be required, how is that going to be handled?
That'll all be addressed in the architectural plan review. If the building needs to be shortened or, you know, parking in the back, we did talk about the ADA access from the side. Excuse me. So that's part of the reason that we want to put this working group together to make sure that all these ideas like, or issues like ADA and parking would be addressed at the forefront.
Mayor, Members of City Council, the working group that Donna mentioned is particularly important because there is system development money that is going to fund this project in part. So it is important that the city is involved throughout this process to make sure that all the appropriate public processes are followed in terms of noticing proposals, bidding, et cetera. And so we look forward to participating with the Historical Society as they, as they move forward and supporting their efforts with that.
As we look forward to moving forward with the city, unfortunately, we have to go by the bid standards of the city, which raises the costs of the facility quite a lot. I'm just going to say a couple of things, and I want to turn it over to Norm Wilson, the architect, to prepare these plans, and he'll have some, some thoughts. And what, what we're trying to get here tonight is this is just the concept plan. And what we want is your approval to move forward with it, as Donna so succinctly, well, both Donna and Jill so succinctly said, so we can go out and raise funds and show what we're raising funds about. So people and organizations and non, and other fundraising places will recognize that. I also wanted to recognize Dinah Hansen. She got here late tonight, and she's our photographer. She's going to be doing some photography at the March 23 fundraiser. With that said, and knowing this is a conceptual plan, I want Norm to come up here. Norm's been working closely with us. This is about the, I think, eighth or ninth iteration we've had already of the concept plan. We've made a lot of changes since we first started.
Good evening, Mayor, and Councilmembers. Norm Wilson, 609 15th Street, Modesto. I'm the architect who's been working with the Historical Society to develop these concept plans. And again, we've said it three times already, they're really just bare concepts. There, there's nothing totally specific, other than the concept of what could we get on the site? If you remember, what, three years ago or whatever, when we tore down the old building that was there, when we decided that it wasn't worth a whole lot, we ended up with a lot that is an old city lot that is 25 feet wide. And it's narrower than any of us have houses on, even if we have a very small house in this city these days. 25-foot lots went away 50 years ago. So we're really working, working with a footprint that is just a long, narrow alley, essentially. And so to develop the annex to the museum, the, as we went through, as Rich said, the various meetings we had and iterations, was it became clear that what we really have to have is more display space, some meeting space that can be functionally revamped when the fire truck is there, when the fire truck's not there, a little meeting space. And then we need some more storage because of all the artifacts they have, you know, Rick McGinnis and Rich and all the guys and that are there all the time, we, you know, we have stuff stored that you can't even get to, right? So we need someplace to display those, to categorize them, catalog them, have them available. All the other things that will come along in the process, which will take some time, are developing of the specific standards that we're going to need to do for building code. Now, the, the concept plan meets code and all that, but the fine details aren't there yet. We haven't gotten that far. For example, asked about the handicap, the accessible parking, as we call it in California. Well, that's going to be done in association with the old parking lot that's behind the museum. We've basically done some survey out there enough to know that we can transition into the back doors of the new museum annex, as we call it, and make that work, that the front entrance from the old Carnegie Library into the front side entrance also works. Obviously, off the city sidewalk, it works because we have main doors that open up, and so we have, so we have actually three access points that we have to sort of resolve, you know? And even though everybody thinks we're flat in the valley here, there's, we're not flat, so we have some transitions that we have to make. The other thing I'd like to point out is, oh, I forgot to, got myself ahead of my game. Can you pass those down? I have the same basic plans here, but what we've done is done a little colored rendition of the floor plan, the site plan, and the front possibility of the building. And what I wanted to, it gives you sort of an idea by color code of the areas we're talking about that, that we've described. And then we have a sort of a semi-colored front elevation of it. And what I wanted to point out is that, you know, we're building in modern-day building codes, but we're trying to grab the essence of the old Carnegie Library. And so the best we can, we're trying to make it old-style-new and still keep in keeping with what's next door, but we still are adjacent and separate at this point in time. Now, that all, again, could change as we have a working team together. You know, we may decide to adjust the property lines if the city wants to. The city owns the lots, but there's a lot of things that can happen in that process. The main purpose of this is simply to use for a diagram, a blueprint, that the Historical Society and the city, as, as team members, can go out and do fundraising, apply for grants, whatever's available to them. I'll give you a good example for what it's worth. 35 years ago, aging myself, and Cal knows, has known me for years, I designed Medical Alert Foundation, the world headquarters in, in Turlock, for Dr. Collins' wife. She was still alive at the time. And the only reason that ended up in Turlock was because she was still alive. Otherwise, I would have been in Chicago with the AMA. They went out and we did this basic thing to start with. Even though they'd been trying for three or four years to raise capital for the, for the project, they were a nonprofit. They didn't have grant availability at that time, back in those days. We started with this kind of basic concept, developed it as we went with a team of them, medical doctors, all sorts of people, and city members, city council members down there who were supportive of it. And it took two and a half years from basic planning until the time it opened its doors. In that period of time, the entire building was paid for. The day they opened the door, they had no mortgage. They owed nothing on it. And so that's what the point of these kind of drawings are and concepts, is that the money flow, the donations, however you go about it, ends up getting to the point where there is no liability to anybody. It's, it's a done deal. And that's what the point of this starting, again, the very starting point, is for the city and the team with the Historical Society. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Mainly, I just wanted to give you an eye light and have you something that you can visually see as councilmembers of what is, what is going on to this point. And as it develops, there'll be more presentations and questions answered and questions asked and issues that we'll find when we do surveys of the site and all that kind of stuff. Is there any questions I can answer?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments from the public? You don't want to bring it back to the council for action?
I just want to first say that this is exciting to see that something is going to happen eventually, but this is real exciting, and I'm glad to see that the society is moving forward. It's exciting. So I'd make a motion. Do we approve the plans? 6.1?
I'll second it.
The concept plans of 6.1.
I'll second it.
A motion to approve the concept plan in a second.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
LRA item 6.2, options for future organization and oversight of the local redevelopment authority and Riverbank Army ammunition plant.
Mayor, Members of City Council, this item has been scheduled to have a discussion about the, the status and the future of the Riverbank Industrial Complex, which is, as you know, the former Army ammunition plant. This is a, a project and a property that is currently owned by the federal government, and we are the leasehold for that. So the city leases the property and manages it and manages the industrial complex, whereas we have approximately 42 businesses, approximately 300 employees, and ongoing environmental remediation. Because we anticipate one, and another environmental project coming forward before you very shortly, you had a review of that a couple of weeks ago, and we anticipate bringing the final documents to you at the, the next meeting or the, the first meeting in April. And also that the, the plan, the, the agreement to actually accept the property is very, is, is very close to being complete. Now, we understand that we can't force this process to go forward, and we appreciate the thoroughness of which the process has allowed the environmental evaluation to, the environmental evaluation to occur. So at this point, we are very, very pleased to be at this point, and we look forward to moving forward with this process and all of its avenues. That being said, I did think it was important for the council to consider in public session all of the options that might be available to the city and the LRA board as we move forward. So no decisions are being made tonight. It is to provide you with an overview of the numerous options and some of the pros and cons associated with those options. We will bring this back to you at a future time and narrow it down. We also anticipate that this might be a, a general subject for the strategic plan that we're having a review of in April. So a very important project. It has significant implications for the next 50 to 100 years for the city, and so we want to make sure we take enough time for both the council and the public to, to look at those options. With that, we have our, our legal counsel for the local redevelopment authority here this evening. He's a senior partner with the firm of Kuchak Rock, which is a firm that has numerous specialties, one of which is, is providing counsel to, in base realignment and closure issues. George Slossberg is here this evening to review some of these options. He is a noted expert in this field throughout the country and has worked on numerous base closures. So we are very fortunate to have him here tonight to be able to provide this, these considerations for you to, to think about, and also to be able to ask him questions about this process that is so important to the city of Riverbank. So at this time, I would like to ask George Slossberg to come and present a report to the council. Debbie Olson will also be participating as needed to ask, to address questions, and we know that she's done an outstanding job. We have copies of the memo that George is going to be using as the basis for his foundation available for the public as well.
Mayor, Members of the council, it's, it's a pleasure for me to be back here again. I've appeared before this council on several occasions over the years as you have wrestled with the closure of the Riverbank Army ammunition plant, which started in, in 2005. Before today, we have wrestled with many questions as to how the plant would close, how it might be conveyed, about the environmental remediation, and all of the items that involve the Department of the Army and our interaction with the Department of the Army. Today's discussion, and I, I prepared a memorandum, which I, I understand has been made available to all of you, has been made available to the public, addresses happily the next phase of this transaction. And that is, at some point, hopefully in the immediate future, the property will be conveyed in fee by the United States to the local redevelopment authority, and it will be yours to, to do with, as you wish, in accordance with your reuse plan. This is a, an issue that cities across the country deal with, with base closure properties. The base closure properties are large, varied. They have facilities, they have uses, some of them have tenants, some of them have none, and it's, it's, it's your ability to shape that process going forward that we wanted to discuss today. I'd like to, to start out by making an important distinction. The city traditionally addresses the development of property in your sovereign capacity. You have the ability to zone property, to provide entitlements for property, and control it through your police powers. That is a limited authority. It is a governmental authority. The way the base closure process works and the way the base closure statute deals with this is you have applied for an economic development conveyance, and the army is poised to convey this property to you. You will then own it in fee as your own property, and you won't be controlling it as a governmental entity. You'll be controlling it as the owner. And as you move forward, as you consider how you want to control it, whether you, and I'll, I'll go through some of the options, whether you want to manage that yourself, whether you want to convey that to a master developer, whether you want to lease it, you have the ability to put in your transfer documents controls and to evidence the city's goals in a contractual way that you can make enforceable onto the property in a way that you could not as a city through your zoning and entitlement process. Right now, you have tenants on the property, and you have the ability to, to mandate certain things that happen on the property with regard to those tenants, with regard to the development. You have the ability contractually to set the pace and intensity of the development. You have the ability contractually to mandate that the property be put to use, which is something you could not do in your zoning. You have the ability to preclude land banking or, or setting aside the property. All of this is intended by the federal statute. The federal statute under which you will acquire the property, in essence, would give you the property without monetary consideration, but that doesn't mean it's for free. You will be obligated, as part of the EDC agreement that will be forthcoming from the army hopefully shortly, you'll be obligated to implement your own vision for the property, which this city prepared in its reuse plan that was submitted to the federal government and was approved by the federal government, and that plan will be embedded into the conveyance documents. So your, your, your mandate in the contract is that you implement your own vision to generate the jobs that were lost when the plant closed. Certainly like to discuss the details of the memo, and I'm certainly open for any of your questions, but I'd like to just go through the highlights of the memo to talk about what, what we identified as certain of the milestones and options that are available to you, as well as some of the questions that other communities similarly situated have asked themselves as they go through this decision-making process. We anticipate very shortly that the army will approve, and you will be given an opportunity to approve, the Environmental Services Cooperative Agreement. This agreement, which I know you've been briefed on, will set the stage, provide you for the funds to bring the Riverbank Army ammunition plant, the facilities, to correct many of the environmental concerns. Those Those environmental concerns will improve the property, in essence, make it more marketable for you, make it more desirable in the private sector, all at the cost and expense of the federal government as part of the base closure process. After that, and I'm anticipating a certain timeline, we believe that we are hopeful within the sometime within the next six months to a year, the Army will approve the economic development conveyance agreement that has been negotiated with the Army. The terms and conditions of that are that it will be conveyed at no cost to the city. Ninety days after the execution of that document, we anticipate the conveyance in fee to the city of the clean portions of the property, the the northern cap, and then when the remediation is completed on the developed the the development portion of the property, that that would be conveyed at a later point in time. We believe that we are fortunate in that the timelines will marry up as follows. We believe that the environmental remediation of the development portion, the work on the ESCA, will come together at a point in time that will allow you to acquire title to the property when it is at its most advantageous condition, when it has been remediated, new roof is put on, new siding is put on, and it will be most attractive to tenants. Because of that, we believe that you will have, at that point in time, the option to do several different things with the property. And we just we we pick five things at random, five options at random, but it no one-size-fits-all, you can mix and match these options. You know, at the at the at the at one end of the of the spectrum, the city could determine to retain ownership of the property, manage the property totally on your own, find tenants, maintain the property, operate it all on your own. On the other end of the spectrum, all the other is that you could competitively solicit a master developer and convey the property in fee in its entirety to a master developer. There are risks, there are rewards on both of on both ends of the spectrum, and there are myriad situations in between. You could lease the property, for example, to a master developer, retain title to it. You could hire a manager to manage it on your own. You could decide to mix and match, retain certain portions of the property for sale or for city use, hire a master developer for the others, and 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 we believe that the economics will drive that. As you go through that decision-making process on how you want to move forward, which we know you'll do in a strategic planning process, there are a couple of questions, key questions, that others have faced in this regard, and it goes to things that are uniquely suited for this council to consider and decide. What are your goals and aspirations for the property? On one extreme, selling the property to the high bidder without restrictions or use is likely to yield the 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 best financial return to the city. That might not guarantee the greatest employment or economic development opportunities to the city. Is it your goal to retain the jobs and the tenants that are there? Is it your job, you know, is it your goal to to maximize the returns? Is one of your goals to limit the liability to the city, to the extent that you would be willing to forego financial return? This is a former Army ammunition plant. There are byproducts of twentieth-century industrial development that are in the ground, in the soil, in the structures, in the buildings. The government, the federal government retains responsibility for those, but operating and managing, you know, a a a plant of this art of this sort has liability issues to it. And these are these are sort of all of the risk-reward ratios that we would have to consider. The 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 memo that we presented, you know, there's a pictorial decision tree as you go through the decisions, and I wasn't I wasn't necessarily planning to go through that, I think it's mind-numbing, and you will, you know, you will, you know, consider those, you know, as time goes by. But I'd like to make a couple of points about this. Control and return are almost mutually exclusive. To the extent you want to guide the pace and intensity of the development, and you mandate that whether it is your lessy, or your master developer, or your contractor, I mean, whomever manages it for you, whether it's a city department, the degree to which you put controls on it minimizes the value of the of the property in the marketplace. I mean, I think that's intuitively obvious, but these are choices for you for you to make. There are many communities that have decided that when they take their base, their goal is to not make a penny. Their goal is to use the federal land-based subsidy, which the United States is giving you, is to repair the damage done to the community by the closure of the base and the loss of the jobs. So every dollar of value goes back into the infrastructure, the job-generating capabilities. There are other communities that have moved on, depending on their economic circumstances, and it it may be that an industrial plant is no longer fits into their city needs or their city desires, and the property is just auctioned, and it is leveled, and the property is put to a different use. Those are the choices before you. The United States is conveying the property or is poised to convey the property, and 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 all of these are 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 things to consider. Some of the of the items, you know, you as the council, you know, know, you know, if you sell it to a master developer, the property goes on to your tax rolls. If you retain ownership and manage it, it does not go on to your tax rolls. If you convey it or transferred or lease it, and you mandate that it stay in its current configuration with its current tenants, you limit its attractiveness to a master developer, which may reduce the return to the city. On the other hand, you guarantee that it's productive and it 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 generates the jobs that you have now. The city, I mean, the 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 city staff, Debbie, the LRA, has been extraordinarily successful compared to your peers in having jobs on the site, of which you essentially have no control yet. You haven't signed the agreement, the Army has not yet consented to convey it to you, and yet you are managing it, you have your own tenants, it is throwing off revenue for you right now. So it you this city should be very happy. I'm not aware of, and as as Jill said, we represent communities across the country. I don't know any other community that has a military department paying them to manage the military's property, which you do right now. Another, an issue that we are asked repeatedly is the liability issue. There are special statutory protections that are available for base closure property that are not available to anybody else. They are, they 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 came from the fact that we are now in our fifth round of base closures in the United States, starting in nineteen eighty-eight, then another round in ninety-one, ninety-three, ninety-five, and two thousand and five, you are a product of the last round of base closures. The early communities in the eighty-eight and ninety-one and ninety-three round were unable, not all of them, many of them were unable to redevelop their properties because of the risks to the marketplace. Lenders were not prepared to lend on contaminated former military property that had unique military contaminants. Congress responded at the request of the Association of Defense Communities and others by providing a waiver of sovereign community, one of four, that the United States has granted, to provide that, to the extent that contaminants are discovered later, the Secretary of Defense shall defend, indemnify, and hold harmless the owners of that property. So that raises the 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 spectrum of of how are you protected? For things that we know about, for example, there are plumes under there, the contract and the deeds that convey the property to you require and mandate that the United States assume responsibility. Those are the things we know about. Those things that we don't know about, that you don't know about, your developer may not know about, the end user may not know about, and we may not discover for ten years when somebody digs a hole in the ground and finds something that they didn't want to find, that was left by the Army, that's where this indemnification comes in, and that's what's unique. So you can rest comfortably knowing that those things we know about are taken care of under CERCLA, those things we don't know about but may discover are taken care of under Section three thirty. These indemnifications are 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 well-received by the marketplace, they're well-understood by the marketplace, and there are developers who will buy the property, will develop the property, there is a lending community that will lend on the property, knowing that their collateral is protected, even though they don't know exactly what's under the ground. The last thing I'd like to say in your evaluation is the economic development conveyance agreement from the Army will require that the investment that you get out of the property for the first seven years must be invested back into the property. So if you sell it, and for for money, let's say, for the seven years that you are getting a revenue stream, or payment if it comes in at the point of sale, or a revenue stream, however the the business deal is structured, that has to be invested back into the property to to essentially for infrastructure, roads and other things that the property will need. That's part of the federal subsidy. So the federal subsidy is to help make the project a success by putting money into the infrastructure. Now, I I I mentioned earlier, you have the opportunity to decide how you might, you know, how you want to value the property, what it is that you actually might might convey. You have the ability to not take the value in cash, to the extent there is any. To the extent that there is value from a developer, you have the ability to take it in a in in many different forms. You could sell it for a check at the time you sign the deed, you could take a revenue stream over many, many years. Many communities have decided to partner with their master developer on the former military by taking a percentage of revenues, provide an incentive both for the community and the master developer to, you know, to invest in the project. You could take it in as in addition to a financial share, you could take all of the value in in-kind consideration. So whatever the value of that development, you can have the master developer invest in your community in infrastructure as well. All of these have been done, and we have dozens of examples across the country. City of San Francisco is doing this with Treasure Island and Hunter's Point, City of Orlando did it with the Naval Training Center, Glenview. There are fifty-nine executed economic development conveyances across the country as of now, and every single one of them is different. But each one reflects the character and the desires of the community, which is what the statute allows. In any event, I I I know you have the memo, and I and I know that there are are questions, either from members of the council, if you want to take members from the the questions from the public, so I thought I would, I can go on for hours, so.
Please, we are interested in hours. Now, does anyone from the council have specific questions before I turn it over to the public?
I do. At one time, there were, there was questions from the residents that live in the area about contamination in their water wells. What plans do we have, or what's going to happen to to that? I understand that it was a plume of contamination, so who's going to monitor that, and will it be in our contract, or exactly what will happen?
The the Army is responsible and has put in monitoring wells, and there is a a requirement under the statute for long-term monitoring until the plume is 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 gone. That is an obligation of the Army. Now, there are many ways that the Army can satisfy that obligation. They can do it themselves, they can do it by contract with a contractor, or they, as part of the agreement with the local reuse authority, they could contract with you. But in all cases, the responsibility remains with the United States, with the Army, to do that.
Plus, anyone with a contaminated well was connected to city water using federal funds, so if there's somebody still on well water that's contaminated, we need to know. Any further? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public.
As the gentleman said, there's anything from you hang on to it, to you get rid of it, and everything in between. My question is, is who's going to go through the iterations to decide financially for the city, including liabilities and everything else that he's discussed, to come up with a plan? Now, he's given the plans in verbiage to sort of tell you that you can do part of it or not, or another part, you can keep part, you can run the whole thing or not, but how are you going to decide which of those five or multiple options are going to be the best economic or job or whatever? In other words, it may be more advantageous not to make any money, but to provide jobs and so on. So how is that going to be done? Are you going to have a separate committee? Is it going to go through the RLA or whatever it is? How are you going to come up with this stuff?
I'll answer that. I know we don't normally discuss, while you're speaking. We intend to bring this process to a strategic planning, and over the next three years, come up with the appropriate process and milestones that we would like to see in, and pick a process that we are going to be happy with. Okay? Every month, the city manager, or maybe every two months, depending, she'll give an update on our strategic plan processes and where we stand. We're not going to make a decision at our next strategic planning process. What we'll do is figure out where do we want to be at what point in time, and as it develops, which one of these plans is most advantageous for either jobs for the city, what takes the liability, that with our liability risk. We'll have a whole process that goes around there. At the same time, we'll be looking at all of our expectations, making sure that they are met with the Army and with the either a master developer, what we choose. And then the disposition at the very end of the of the process, whether we want to hang on to it or not, there are, there's advantages for both, or multiple uses. So we're going to go through that process, and hopefully, within the next two years, we will have everything set, so when the Army goes, here's your paper, we can immediately make the the appropriate decision. You're welcome to come in and discuss it with us on April fourth.
Yeah.
5th? April 5th. We'll start at 08:30, and you can watch us paint the walls and watch it dry. It's that exciting. But we'll be starting our strategic planning and probably have different topics. And at the very end of this process, which will take the two years, we'll have a solid plan. We won't do it in one meeting or two meetings, it'll be over a period of time with research, input, and decisions. Does that, okay, thank you. All right, so I interrupted public comment. So is there any other public comment? Thank you. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the city council.
I just wanted to say thank you for all of this information, and as the mayor was stating, I am looking forward to going through the strategic planning process to get some things ironed out. This has been a long time running, and it's kind of exciting to see we're to a point, and we can see some light at, at the end of the tunnel.
It's obvious you weren't at the state of the city.
I wasn't. I wasn't, and I'm sorry, I missed it.
Any other comments? Say again, oh, sorry.
Just that I want to thank George for the trouble he went through to inform us of the different views that we could take on this. There's going to be a lot of decision-making on our part, and we will do it carefully and as considered as we can. As the mayor said, this is not going to just happen overnight.
I'd like to thank Debbie for getting us thus far. It's been a long, hard road, and you've put a lot of work into it, so thank you for sticking, sticking and hanging in there with us.
Ditto, to both of you.
And we look forward to comparing all of the options that you have seen and coming up with the appropriate one for Riverbank. Thank you. We received the report. Item 7, comments. Staff comments, please.
Yes, Mayor of City Council, Donna Kinney, our Planning and Building Manager, is going to start off tonight.
Yes, last week, on Wednesday, excuse me, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, four of the planning commissioners and I went to San Ramon to a League of Cities Planning Commission Academy. We saw a lot of good sessions on stormwater, on the drought, on public outreach, and getting solid comments on city projects, just a whole range of topics. And I just wanted to take the time, as I know my commissioners, if they were here as well, to thank you, to thank you for that opportunity to attend and network and to learn more about their positions. Thank you.
Also, Mayor and council, actually, Donna is the only member of the staff providing comments this evening from the floor. I did want to let the council know that we have heard from the agency that controls the use of the Del Rio building, that it does look like that building may near, is nearing a sale, and that that sale may be concluded by the middle of this month, so there may be some information on that in the news media as we approach the end of the month. But did want to let you know that that is, that is pending, it looks like it's going forward. That is, that's really good news, another possibility for putting a building back on the tax rolls and seeing some investment in our downtown, so that could potentially be very positive.
Thank you. Item 7.2, council authority members. Councilmember Jones-Cruz, please.
I just wanted to say it's good to be back. I missed a last council meeting, I was a little under the weather, so I'm catching up here and work, and glad to be here tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell.
I'd like to say that besides the fundraiser the Historical Society is putting on in the very near future, this is the time of the year that there'll be more coming up in our community, so keep your eyes open and support the nonprofits.
Thank you. Councilmember Bargen Martinez.
Just a reminder that daylight savings time starts this coming weekend, and spring will officially be here later in the month, so please watch out for children playing. And a reminder that there are sandbags that are available at our corporation yard to help with flooding. International Women's Day is today, so thank you to all women that are making a difference in their communities. And we've had several new businesses to join our Riverbank community, so I'd like to say officially welcome to them. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
I also wanted to say welcome to our new businesses. I'm really excited about the IMAX coming, very excited about the changes at the Historical Society Museum. We've got a lot of positive things going on. It's very exciting to hear the news about the, the Del Rio coming close to fruition on a sale, and it's a good, it's a good day to be a business in Riverbank, so welcome to all our new businesses, and congratulations to the city.
Thank you. I'd like to extend my thanks to Norma Martinez for her support for the state of the city, and I appreciate all those who attended and helped develop that little talk. With that, we're going to move into closed session, which consists of item 8.1, Conference with Real Property Negotiators, Government Code, Section 5495, 6.8, Property APN 062-031-007, 062-031-006, 062-008-009, Agency Negotiator Jill Anderson, City Manager, and Debbie Olson, LRA Executive Director, Property Negotiator U.S. Army under negotiations, price, terms, or payment, and/or both. At this time, any member from the public who wishes to comment on item 8.1 has the, all the public left, so with that, we are going to close session. A report from a closed session on LRA, item 9.1, report on closed session, LRA, item 8.1, Conference with Real Property Negotiators, direction has been provided to staff. With that, we conclude the business meeting today.